Okay. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, any additions or deletions of the agenda?
No, sir.
Is there a motion proven minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're going to start with presentations this evening. We have our Director of Human Resources, Kristi Lillers, here for 2021 Veterans Day observance.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good evening to all Allegheny County employees and members of the public. This evening, Allegheny County Government is holding its Veterans Day observance. We celebrate Veterans Day to recognize those from all branches of the Armed Forces who put their lives on the line to defend the freedoms that we so often take for granted. Tonight, we would like to publicly honor all current employees of Allegheny County as well as members of the general public who proudly served the United States of America. These individuals served the nation with honor and in a great personal sacrifice. It is my distinct privilege to recognize those Allegheny employees who identified themselves as veterans who served in the United States Armed Forces. A total of eighteen Allegheny County employees are veterans of the Armed Forces with a combined total of one hundred and thirty-two years of service representing multiple branches. Allegheny County Government is very proud to employ veterans and provides up to fifteen calendar days of paid military leave to eligible employees on an annual basis for training purposes. At this time, we would like to recognize all veterans, both Allegheny County employees and members of the general public, for their courage and honor through a round of applause. Allegheny County Government would like to publicly express sincere gratitude to all veterans for their unwavering commitment to country, justice, and democracy. Thank you all for your service and good evening. Thank you, Commissioners.
Great.
Thank you, Kristi.
Thank you to everyone who served. Commissioner Caprilli and I were able to attend a ceremony Tuesday for Mr. Robert Mathias, who was actually the first officer killed on D-Day, and he's buried over at St. Peter and Paul's. There's a marker and there's a great story about him over there, and so that was a very moving ceremony.
Amazing story, yep.
Great. Okay. Gentlemen, we don't have much of an agenda tonight, but before we get to the consent, we got two letters to read into the record. If you would just stand by for a minute. The first one is just going to be under my signature and the second one will be under all three. The first one is to Superintendent Public Schools, Mr. Mohammed Tchadari, and it reads as follows. "Mr. Tchadari, I want to thank you first for visiting Allegheny County in Garrett Public Schools last month and taking time to meet with teachers and school leadership. We need decision-makers to speak openly with those who are on the front lines. Allegheny County faces unique challenges that do not resemble those faced by larger urban jurisdictions. We lack the network of educational resources found in wealthier communities. We're not Montgomery County and we're not Baltimore County. Local officials, teachers, and parents in Western Maryland feel excluded from decisions that impact our students. In September, the State Board of Education mandated masks for students across Maryland after ordering each local elected Board of Education to make their own determination. There's been inconsistent messaging on how local jurisdictions can or should handle the pandemic. For our students, we need to do better and we need a clear message. We need local control. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners of Allegheny County, I would encourage you to return authority on masks in schools to local jurisdictions at the State Board of Ed's meeting in December. We've known from the beginning that school-aged children have very little risk of severe illness from COVID-19 when compared to adults. Hospitalization, death rates among children remain extremely low, and yet the classroom, sports teams, and extracurricular activities that once provided structure to our over eight thousand students in Allegheny County remain upended, even as other institutions seem to return to normal. The pandemics impacted all of us, but it's our students who continue to lose. Since the pandemic began, more children have died by suicide than COVID-19 in our country. The CDC has reported a dramatic increase in hospitalizations related to childhood suicide attempts and other mental health issues. These hospitalizations were up forty percent during the last academic school year when lockdowns kept students out of school. With every lockdown mandate and quarantine, there's a cost. We can't let fear blind us from the mental health crisis we are fostering. Maryland was the third-to-last state to return to the classroom, and I agree with comments made last month where the superintendent said a lot of damage was done to undeserved kids. In a county that faces problems of addiction, hunger, child poverty, we understood the dangers posed to these underserved kids firsthand, and that's why Allegheny County is one of the first counties in Maryland to return to the classroom, well ahead of the state. The return to school was meant to signal a return to normalcy, but with statewide mandates and arbitrary quarantine rules, this school year is anything but normal. Students are sent home with no virtual learning options and they're counted as absent. They are not allowed to return to class even with a negative COVID test. Students are expected to wear masks all day, every day, even if they are fully vaccinated. And for how long? Will December's meeting be another shift to goalposts? We need a transparent timeline and we need clear metrics. Most importantly, we need all these decisions be made locally. I trust our local officials, teachers, and parents know what's best for our students. Returning all kids to school full-time and to sports and activities to keep them engaged and healthy should be our top priority. Please do not let fear and an excess of caution distract from the needs and mental health of our students. And once again, I strongly encourage you to return the authority on masks in schools to local jurisdictions at next month's State Board of Education meeting. Thank you." Lee, do you want to introduce the next thing we're going to read to the Governor?
Certainly. Commissioners, the next letter that we have prepared for your signature is dealing with a proposed resolution of the national opioid litigation that Allegheny County was very early to join into. We're represented in that by Bruce Poole out of Hagerstown, Maryland. He represents our locality along with the city of Cumberland, the city of Frostburg, a number of other counties and municipalities throughout the state. At the present juncture, a number of the major defendants have declared bankruptcy. Some are offering resolution, and the courts are working through proposed settlement agreements and proposed settlements conferences with the major parties. Mr. Poole represents a group of Maryland plaintiffs, and he's teamed with larger national counsel that represent a large class of government entities like ours. Presently, the state of Maryland through the Attorney General's office is working on a separate projected resolution of the litigation that's out there. We've received advice from Mr. Poole that he believes that the proposed actions by the Attorney General of Maryland and other Attorney Generals would not be beneficial to Allegheny County and to the other municipalities and localities that he represents. So he has requested that and provided legal counsel to us that we would send a letter to Attorney General Frosch and to the state of Maryland asking that he not undertake the current path of resolution that they had proposed. Essentially, what they are proposing is to put a majority of settlement proceeds in at the state level and to allow the state to divvy up the funds as they believe would be appropriate. In this instance, Commissioners, Allegheny County Government in particular, not speaking for other localities, but Allegheny County Government has expended a tremendous amount of time, effort, and man-hours into compiling the information when, very early in this litigation, when it was necessary for government localities to quantify their damages. Allegheny County was one of the most thorough localities. We provided a nearly three-thousand-page fact sheet that outlined expenditures that various departments and various entities throughout the Allegheny County region have expended as part of trying to fight the opioid epidemic. We've really put in a lot of man-hours and groundwork to try to bring this litigation to a close, and Mr. Poole believes that the proposed resolution by Attorney General Frosch would not be in our best interest. So he's asked that you express that opinion. We prepared a letter for your signature to that effect.
Great. And gentlemen, just so you know, this has been going on since May of 2018. Attorney Beeman's predecessor, Mr. Rudd, was still here, and so this has been going on a long time, and you know, when we did this, we made sure we found a really good law firm to represent us, that there was no cost to us unless there would be some sort of settlement. And even at the time, you know, there was some criticism that it would never happen, it was a waste of time, you know, it was a waste of energy, and you know, now we're on the cusp of actually getting a settlement, and the Attorney General, who hasn't seemed to be involved, now wants to step up and negotiate, and it would certainly hurt Allegheny County. So this is going to the Board of Public Works, which is the final arbiter of any decision that would involve the settlement. So it reads as follows. "Dear Governor Hogan, representatives of citizens of Allegheny County, we request that you intervene with Attorney General Brian Frosch as to his proposed settlement of the opioid litigation involving the three largest opioid distributors, AmerisourceBergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson, as well as manufacturer Johnson &amp; Johnson. Specifically, we request that you assist us in securing split of proceeds that gives eighty-five percent to localities and fifteen percent to the state. Attorney General Frosch's proposal places the bulk of the money in the hands of the state government and decidedly leaves the less populated counties and towns in a difficult position to obtain any recovery or relief. Under Attorney General Frosch's proposal, all counties with a population under two-hundred-and-forty-thousand would have to apply to the state for funds in excess of fifteen percent of the total settlement. This puts even more of a burden on rural and outer suburban counties and localities and does not take into consideration the fact that those local governments have less capacity to fund their own recovery from the damage which opioids have caused. Allegheny County, Maryland, is the poster child for the opioid epidemic. Whether through public research and reports by Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health, data from the National Arcos Database and the CDC, or news reports and editorials such as those in the Baltimore Sun, it's overwhelmingly evident that we've been dealing with the opioid epidemic since at least 2007. In 2016, the CDC reported that Allegheny County has having opioid prescription rate of one hundred and twenty-seven per hundred people. One hundred and twenty-seven per one hundred people, the highest in the state that year, and more than one prescription for every man, woman, and child in the county. For the same year, the prescription rate was seventy-one in Baltimore City and sixty-nine-point-eight in Anne Arundel. The county and its municipalities of Cumberland and Frostburg have been litigants in the national litigation, MDL 2804, since May of 2018. Attorney General Frosch did not choose to file suit on the state's behalf against any manufacturers or distributors but for Purdue Pharma, nor did he move to file any suit against any of the pharmacy defendants. Yet he would take eighty-five percent of the money that's been offered due to the participation of Allegheny County, Cumberland, and Frostburg as plaintiffs in the aforementioned suit. There's no guarantees as how this money and any regional fund pool be distributed, thus there could be a chance that Allegheny, Cumberland, and Frostburg would receive nothing or pittance. Our initial plaintiff fact sheet and amended plaintiff fact sheet filed in national litigation totals twenty-nine-hundred-and-fifty-five pages of evidence as to the burden of the opioid epidemic on our citizens, law enforcement, and first responders, health system, public schools, economic development efforts. Here is not an area of necessary public services where the county hasn't diverted significant budget funding to a funding created by the opioid epidemic. We've been forfeiting our future to the diversion of funding to clean up the needed epidemic far better than Attorney Frosch, and we know where to apply these settlement funds and in what measure. Governor, turning the tide in the opioid epidemic's been a personal mission for you and your administration. You know how hard the epidemic has affected Allegheny County, as well as all you've done to fight it and protect our citizens. It's Allegheny County municipalities that suffered and poured all into the fight against opioids in our county, and it's Allegheny County, the city of Cumberland and Frostburg that need to directly receive and apply the settlement monies due to them as plaintiffs. Other states have recognized the opioid problem as predominantly a local one and have proposed settlements whereby seventy to one hundred percent of distributions go to localities. North Carolina is giving eighty-five percent, Wisconsin seventy, Louisiana's a hundred. Other states are currently contemplating similar proportions. The Attorney General should amend his proposal to a similar distribution plan. We ask you to ensure this settlement's not a repeat of the 1998 tobacco debacle. Governor, you are not one to ignore rural Maryland, nor assume we cannot manage our own opioid abatement needs. We'd appreciate it if you stood up for rural Maryland and Allegheny County. We, of course, are available to discuss this in further detail or to be of any assistance, as is our attorney, Mr. Bruce Poole. Thank you for your consideration. Signed, the County Board of Commissioners, Jake Shade, Cree Brody, Dave Caprilli. Thank you."
Lee, regarding this letter, they can't make us... This is a recommendation, not a mandate, more or less, that any more than any other settlement, they could take the funds essentially or...
So Commissioner Caprilli, in this instance, Mr. Poole and the litigation group that we're part of represent a number of the class-action litigants, but ultimately it'll be something that we put to a vote as to a total settlement. We're part of a larger group, and so ultimately, we can't be forced to vote one way or another. But if a majority of the class-action litigants would choose to follow a particular proposal, if the states would strong-arm other proponents into resolving the case in that manner, then we could essentially be strongholded.
Well, I think one of the other issues with that is there are other counties and municipalities that didn't participate in this and, you know, could benefit from the work.
It's absolutely correct.
Is the city of Cumberland that we know, are they joining us on sending a letter back rejecting this?
I believe they are. I believe Mr. Poole has recommended all of his clients to send similar letters. I know... I'm not aware at this point whether the city of Cumberland has. I know several other counties in Maryland that Mr. Poole represents have set letters at this point.
Would he get paid by the state if the settlement goes that way?
He would be paid, yeah, regardless.
Thank you. That was a little jab, though. Thank you, Mr. Beeman.
Great. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda tonight. Administrator Bennett?
So good evening, Commissioners. Six items tonight on the consent agenda. Item two is the Jade Meadow Solar Project Tax Stabilization Agreement with Point Reyes Energy Partners in the amount of $100,000 annually for thirty years. Item three is the U.S. General Service Administration Lease Amendment Number Seven prohibiting contracting for certain telecommunications and video surveillance services. Item four is Fiscal Year Twenty-Two Operating Assistance Grant Agreement for transit in the amount of $1,293,434. Item five is the Maryland Emergency Service Transporter Supplemental Payment Program in an agreement with Public Consulting Group, LLC, for Medicaid and a supplemental payment program for EMS. Item six is community promotions to give $500 to Bishop Walsh School for their participation in the National Interscholastic Basketball Conference, and specifically for a Nike Elite Basketball League event, which will be here in Cumberland at Allegheny College of Maryland December 2nd through the 4th, and televised on ESPN. And finally, item seven is the Allegheny County Board of Elections Memorandum of Understanding for Early Voting, for them to hold early voting right here in the Allegheny County Office Complex.
Great. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Mr. Bennett?
Nothing further for me.
Attorney Beeman?
Nothing more for me, thank you.
Commissioner Caprilli?
Nothing to add tonight.
Commissioner Brody?
Sir, we just want to keep her going.
All right. I've talked enough tonight, okay. Signed up, we only have one person, Mr. Jack Knightengale.
I'm going to keep beatin' this source here. By the way, did you miss me? I have it there. It's August thirteenth. I do believe that meeting, someone in the back was supposed to check with the state of Maryland or somebody about this issue, and I haven't heard a word. Has anything been done? Any feedback?
Yeah, and Mr. Dan DeWitt in the back can probably elaborate better than me, but they did take it to the Traffic Advisory Council. Traffic Advisory Council took it under advisement, reviewed it. What needs to happen from here is a traffic study needs to happen, and that needs, since the road is actually in the town of Coney limits, the town of Coney needs to commission that study, and I think that work could potentially be commencing soon. Correct, Dan?
Yes, so the... My recommendation would be that that study needs to be commissioned by the town, and because that committee that we're part of, the Traffic Advisory Committee, I think the problem would change would be that we're commissioners, Mr. Shade, make our condition merit for this issue, although it affects both of us because the area is questioned by your home. Mr. Knightengale, sir, is within the town limits. They would need to make a request for assistance with that study. We are working with them on a number of issues at the moment and around the town. I'd be happy to help them try to figure out what best to do, but because of the number of different types of vehicles that are impacting you, the frequency, trying to figure out the best option, and the likelihood that it involves some sort of law enforcement presence and enforcement is out of our current control, it's not our place to just go ahead and take that. So it has to be done in concert, put them, and have some actual numbers for them to go on to make recommendations. If any type of posting or recommendation beyond just a sign of enforcement or street improvements or changes needed to accommodate and protect your house could not be in committees' authority to recommend or my authority to recommend, or the county in here, you couldn't be able to help them with complications of big town road property.
Yeah, but a very small portion of that road's a town. It's less than half a mile, the rest is the counties.
I agree with you, the issue there.
Well, the county needs to be involved in this process, too.
And we are. However, the area specifically next to your home is within town, is that correct?
Yeah. The corner of my proper property is the end of the town limits. That is correct.
So my recommendation, and we discussed this with state highway administrators, state police, other agencies, private committee, the best way to get this through is to make sure that the mayor and town council are on board with that, and if they request a study and we can come up with someone that drains the situation to come up with what that posting is, there is an opportunity to post signs. However, just like any other sign, if it's not enforceable, then it's doing good.
Okay. Have you been in touch with the administration of Town and Coney about this? Because we were at a council meeting Monday night, and they said not a word. I mean, this is the first I've heard in three months. This is the first feedback I've gotten in three months from anybody.
So that committee meets a month later, and it makes...
First Monday night of every month, yes, sir.
No, I'm sorry, the Traffic Advisory Committee meets every month, and this was discussed and promptly kind of recommended by that group last month, and discussed with our administration here, so that I can make me to go back to that now with that.
But what I'm saying is the town of Lona Coney had any representative in any of these meetings, if they've invited to attend?
The recommendation of the committee would not go back to them through discussion. If they like to join in.
But you said the town of Lona Coney has to commission a study.
In order for this issue to come up with a sign placement, they would be the driver of a study to determine what the appropriate signing would be, is that correct?
Okay. All right. That's more pictures for you, gentlemen. Pictures one through three, everybody's familiar with.
One second, Mr. Knightengale. Would the study be through the Traffic Advisory Council, Dan, or it be separate?
The role of that council, in my understanding and my involvement with it today, would be that we would recommend that they retain a consultant who's...
We'd recommend Lona Coney did.
We would recommend Lona Coney to contain a consultant to do.
Okay.
Whether we would participate financially or through assistance in commissioning the study through this for discussion, but that committee, my knowledge, does not...
So really, so there's nothing left for the Traffic Advisory Committee to do, then?
No.
Okay.
No.
Can we get a letter together for either me or Jason to send to Lona Coney, laying that out, and what our recommendation is?
Yep, because as far as I know, they know nothing about this at all.
Okay. Thanks. Go ahead, Mr. Knightengale.
Look at pictures number one through three, everybody's familiar with them. The grade warning signs posted at four, three, and two-mile mark versus the bottom of Black Bone Mountain, indicating the grade to be nine percent. Now compare this to the grade on Jackson Mountain, which is seventeen percent. Picture number four is taken at the bottom of Black Bone Mountain. Set that one aside, because it's going to come back into play here in a little bit. And it indicates the road going left into the Mill Wood Yard, going right over into Luke, or straight into the wall of the bottom of Black Bone Mountain. We know what's happened there over time. Picture number five is a picture of that cross. Those crosses by Black Bone Mountain, there's twenty-six crosses there, and I'll guarantee you, every one of those men driving their tractor-trailers that hit that wall felt when they hit the top of that mountain, they had a vehicle that was in very good operating condition. There's twenty-six lives lost. Picture number six is a picture of the intersection above Jackson Mountain, which my place is there on the left where you see that yellow post. Straight ahead is the Senior Citizen Center. That little road you see off to... I'm sorry, to the right, that little road you see off to the right. A HRDC truck loads and unloads handicapped individuals there four times a day, sometimes eight, ten, twelve people in that van when they come down out of there. So runaway tractor-trailer there, or triaxial can go right into the Senior Citizen Center, left down Allegheny Street, or straight into the Senior Citizen Center. How many lives is that going to cost? Picture number seven is the bottom of Jackson... Or bottom of West Henne Camp Street, which is right now, where after you do the S-turn, down the bottom next section, another S-turn. That is, to your left is West East Henne Camp Street, to your right is West Henne Camp Street, straight ahead is High Jackson Street, off to the left to the B is Robber Street, and then straight down is Jackson Street. Four-way intersection. Set that in a... Not that one, I'm sorry. Four, six, and eleven is the ones you need to put aside. Pictures number eight, nine, and ten is a tractor-trailer navigating that turn. In front of Eagle Nursing Home. Now, how is anything going to get it by there? Those trucks... That one truck is blocking five venues of traffic. Now, I've seen three and four of them come down at a time. Picture number eleven, again, that's the bottom of West Henne Camp Street. You notice that's a residential area. So runaway truck, it can go right up to Robber Street, left down Jackson Street, or straight head into residential area. Picture number twelve, that's right across from my place, it's two posts in the ground to protect telephone... Or a fire plug, fire hydrant, from being torn up by these trucks. Take a look at picture number thirteen. See that post laying on the ground? It was hit one week ago. You know it tore that post out, and it was cement in the ground. A four-wheeler come down Jackson Mountain, lost its brakes, made the turn. A young lady flew off the back of that four-wheeler and hit that post and tore it out of the ground. Now, what's a sixty-thousand-pound tractor-trailer going to do? Picture number fourteen shows you where the four-wheeler ended up, over at the corner in Mr. Rusty Butler's yard. Picture number fifteen, just the sign of Jinxon Street up in Frostburg, right across from Westmore High School. The only significance that has is when you look at picture number sixteen. They've got a load limit of twenty-ton up there, and they're enforcing it. Now, why can't you put load limits on these streets? Common sense, if you'd go up there and watch one of those tractor-trails come down that turn, you know they don't belong there, and not one of you sitting there would want them Now, I want to go back to the August thirteenth meeting, and in particular, the reference to August one, August two, and August eight, those oversized loads going up Jackson Mountain. Commissioner Brody and I would add a little bit. For me losing my cool, I apologize to you, Mr. Brody, but at the end of the conversation, he said yes. Mr. Russell did have the permits. you, Mr. Brody, but at the end of the conversation, he said, yes, Mr. Russell did have the permits, but he also stated that Mr. Russell had called him, because I was out there taking pictures, and I thought, wait a minute, this doesn't make sense. If he's legal, why does he have to call anybody? So I went over to the MDOT on Boogie Road and talked to a lady over there about this, and the procedure is, when you have an oversized load in this area, you call them and report when you're going to haul and what you're going to haul. She had no phone calls for that day, or for the first, or for the second, or for the eighth, but she did give a phone number for her first, Josette Kane Tuck, who is the supervisor of the hauling permit unit down in Baltimore. I gave her Mr. Russell's name, Mr. Russell's address, Mr. Russell's DOT number, Mr. Russell's trailer number, and then I thought, wait a minute, there's another party involved here. I gave her Mr. Anthony Taylor's name, ARJ Construction, which is the name of his company, and Jackson Mountain Freeport Mine, which is the name of mine up there. There was no permits issued whatsoever for any of that, but you told him it was okay to haul it up there. Your friend put you in a bad situation, Creed. You know what those permits would have cost him? 90 bucks. I would have never done that to you, Creed. That's what your friend did to you. You call him a friend. Now, the coal company, and it goes right to helping out the coal company, not me, well, I've seen no help whatsoever. I'm still stuck repairing my property, and they still continue to damage the turns, those tractor trailers, they just don't care. I'm a big truck, get the hell out of my way, is what they're saying. Mr. Taylor told the town council that no one be allowed on the strip slate before 6:00 in the morning. Well, I hate to tell you, 2:02 on the morning of the 27th, four tri轴s and not two tractor trailers behind, and they were back down the mountain by 4:00. That sure didn't make 6:00. So what I'm telling you is Mr. Taylor's word is not worth the air is breathed into. Monday of this week, tractor trailer had to back up to let a triaxial come down the hill. Where'd he back up to? Right on the sidewalk belonging to Rusty Butler. Who's going to fix that when it's busted up? Those sidewalks up in Lone Coney designed for tractor trailers? I watched it. It didn't, I stood there and watched it, and he didn't care, because nothing's ever been done. And I've been going at this for over a year and a half, and I ain't going to quit. You're going to do something one way or the other.
Mr. Knightengale, I think we're going to take the next step here, and I think Dan can prepare a letter, and we'll get it over to the town of Lone Coney for the next steps. Unfortunately, you know, there are certain things that towns and cities have to do, and, you know, this is an issue that they, I think, have to be in total partnership, or certainly if not in partnership, but I'd say even taking the lead on. So we'll certainly get that. The advisory committee, what we talked about in August, just met in October, and that was their recommendation, so that's the next step.
Okay. Who owns Jackson, or Jinxon Street in Frostburg? The city of Frostburg, right? Who owns the county roads? Come on, who owns, okay. If the city of Frostburg can put a 20-ton limit on their road and enforce it, you can do the same thing. City, county, state, federal law, that's the succession. You own those roads, you can do it. If for no other reason, for public safety. We talked about this cross being at the bottom of Backbone Mountain one at a time. Oh, pull up pictures number four, 6, and 11, and set them, put number four in the middle of 6 and 11. I'm going to show you something. There's four, 6, and 11. You see three intersections there, don't you? Picture number four is the bottom of Backbone Mountain, that's where the crosses were added one at a time. Pictures number 6 and 11 are right into residential areas. When you start adding crosses, they won't be one at a time, they'll be three and four at a time. Do you want to answer for that? There's no way those trucks can run away and not hit a residential area. They can't make an S-turn with any of those trucks. And the S-turn in front of me isn't 90 feet long. You can downturn and make another turn. Anthony Taylor and those truckers don't care about anything but turning the money. And it's your responsibility to protect the property and the lives of the citizens of Allegheny County. No feedback?
I'm assuming we'll be taking the next steps, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen, for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
This won't be my last.
Thank you. Okay. Our next public business meeting will be on Thursday, November 18th, 2021. We'll have a bigger agenda that night, so that's two weeks. See you then. Thanks.